I'd like to call out order the Board of Education meeting. Welcome, this is the regular board meeting of Bloomfield Hills on February 15th. Jackie, will you take attendance please?
All board members are present.
And we have rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before I get too much further, I'd like to thank our TV crew for this evening. Cameron Carlton, Joelle Hamilton, Brandon Nager, Vicki Chandler, and Dave Shulkin for helping us bringing the message to the community. The board is reconvening following a closed session for superintendent evaluation and then a study session where we had a wonderful presentation from our instructional or learning services team on literacy effective practices and then a brief conversation of the use of the property and building at the Lassiter High School site. I started my day today listening to the news out of Florida and as I listened more and more and I thought about it more and more, I was heartbroken and I was angry and I wanted to know, I was thinking about what can I do to have a voice? And we as a Board of Education for our community do have an opportunity to have a voice. And so tonight, I first want to start out by asking for prayers and a moment of silence to think about those who've lost their lives in Florida. And I also want to thank and appreciate the life and the dedication of our staff member, Mary Joan Schneider, who was a secretary at Lassiter and then at BH High School for many years and who passed away earlier this week. All of those folks who have passed in the last few days are gifts to this earth and we have lost some wonderful teachers and people who have taken care of children and I'd ask for a moment of silence. As I talked about this today with my husband, he said, "We ought to think about what Mr. Rogers would say to us today." And I'm like, "Really? I'm going to talk about Mr. Rogers?" And yet he handed this to me and so I'll share this thought because I think we need some, a positive thing to say. So for Mr. Rogers, when I was a boy and I would see scary things in the news, my mother would say to me, "Look for your helpers. You will always find people who are helping." To this day, especially in times of disaster, I remember my mother's words and I'm always comforted by realizing that there are still so many helpers, so many caring people in this world. So I think of the teachers and the police officers and the emergency folks and all those who care for and look out over our children across our country and around the world and thank them and remember that they're always people who are looking to help others. And so we're going to change our agenda a little bit tonight from what we had published in our published agenda to talk about that a little bit more later in the meeting. But I don't want to leave us in that note now because there's always wonderful things going on in our school district every day. And so I do want to call out that tonight at our high school, the middle years program, our 10th graders were giving their, showing off the projects that they've been doing this year. And I'm sorry that I was here in this meeting because it's one of my favorite events to attend each year where our children can show a major project of their own passion that really shows how they can become architects of their futures. And so it's a fabulous event and I hope that we get some tweeting out and some pictures on the website about some of the things that were being done at the high school tonight. And I want to talk about some good things that are going on in the district coming up on March 24th. Our Bloomfield Hills Foundation will be having our foundation celebration which helps to us to provide grants for our teachers to bring wonderful new tools to help our kids in new and special ways. We were talking tonight about our literacy effective practices and we've been able to through the foundation, find ways to support libraries for English language learners and supporting some of the materials for our learning centers for our kids. And there's a million ways that we've been able to find ways to support our teachers. So that's an exciting and fun way to help us support our foundation. And with that, I've asked Dr. Glass if he could share some information with our community because I really think that it's important for us to share the information that safety and security of the children in our school district is of the paramount importance to us. It is one of our core values, has been, always will be. And our district has made ongoing conscientious efforts to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make sure that our children and our staff members are safe and secure. So, Dr. Glass?
Before we go there, I would like to make a friendly amendment to our agenda tonight to remove two items, the two items under general discussion and add the item of resolution in opposition of Senate bills.
Support.
So you would like to table the items under general discussion?
Yes.
And you want to add a business item at the end of the agenda?
Yes.
And I have support for Mr. Cohen. We want an agreement?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. For a number of years now, we've had, we have undertaken some very robust safety and security measures in our school district. Particularly in the wake of the Sandy Hook tragedy, we realized that although we had a lot of safety procedures in place, that we needed to do more. And at that time, this board took the administration's recommendation to hire a security officer who was a police officer with the Bloomfield Township Police, Officer Corey Donberger, who's been with us now since that time. I'm very appreciative of the board's willingness to do that. That was not something in the budget initially, that's something that you agreed to do because safety is our number one priority. So when Officer Donberger arrived, he did a complete needs assessment of everything in our district. He analyzed from his professional point of view and corroborating with all the training that he's had with agencies, governmental agencies, all the best practices on the subject. Once he completed that assessment, he made recommendations and then helped institute those recommendations for security throughout our system. Everything from best practices with any electronic surveillance, with securities at doorways, procedures for entering, drills for any kind of eventuality, whether it's a shelter in place to a complete lockdown. Now, it's easy to say those things and every school does those things, but what matters is to what degree of fidelity are those things carried out? And because we have Officer Donberger working with us, he's finding any areas of weakness in our stated system and going back and redoubling those efforts at staff meetings, working with principals, making sure that we're doing what we say in our emergency manual we are going to do. We try very hard to recognize that we want to do all this without feeling like we're in a lockdown environment because for students to learn, yes, they need to feel safe, but they also need to feel, you know, a certain amount of unrestricted freedom. And it sends a message, you know, if we're restricting overly. So I think we've done very well with that over this last number of years and others have, you know, looked at our manual like the one hanging on the wall over there and we drill regularly and we track all those things. I think we're doing really, really well. We have our, you know, the Blue Point system at our high school, which has worked very, very well. We've put, we've installed the boot devices in all of our buildings to make sure that students and teachers can lock and secure their classrooms so that no one can get in when necessary. And I think we've gone the extra mile with Officer Donberger to actually train our staff to actually know how to assess whether it may be better in a situation to flee than to lockdown because that may in fact be, that is the new best practice. Sometimes you don't just lock down, you need to get out. And so he's actually been able to train people to be able to have that expertise to actually make those decisions, those life altering decisions when they need to. So we're doing very well with that. I believe that, you know, with some substantial expense, you know, that would require some extreme building remodeling perhaps in the future, yeah, we could probably do some more things because just the way our buildings are laid out, you know, you've got to work within that framework. So with the framework we have, I think we're doing everything we know how to do and all the best practices that we know are being put into place day by day with fidelity in our schools. I feel very confident about that and you should feel very confident about that. That said, schools are not, you know, completely isolated behind 14-foot concrete walls with no windows and children still to go out to play. We even, you know, drilled for some of those things. But we, you know, we have to be realistic about schools that within that environment that we have, I think we have made our environment as secure as we can possibly make it with the buildings we currently have. So, moving on to the next phase, when you look at some, so many of these situations, it would, you know, the question of someone who is troubled in some way, you know, is initiating these acts. And it begs the question about how do we get better communication going? I think that is the next level that we can, that we can take on, which is with our agencies, with our community agencies, our police, our fire, and others, how do we get a tighter communication loop so that as people in our community, whether it's citizens or whether it's, you know, police, police on the road, see things happening, that they can get that information to our schools regularly and reliably? It happens now, but we are two different agencies, right? And so there are ways to make that communication tighter. When we see something not right in a part of our community and it needs assistance, it needs mental health assistance, or it needs some sort of social safety net to provide assistance, what we're finding is oftentimes, if we can identify it, oftentimes that that assistance is lacking. You know, the support for mental health has been cut right off over the last number of years. That's a little bit beyond what we can control at this point, but I would say that we can advocate for those kinds of things, they should be happening. We can advocate for the kind of mental health services that make our communities stronger. And, you know, it's not to say that those who are doing those services aren't doing a good job, but there are resource constraints and that is something I think we can talk to our legislators about. Do we have the appropriate resources to deal with mental health issues broadly? And that is something that we'll be advocating for. But how do we then, you know, bring in tighter our communication loop with the other agencies? I think we can do that and I think we can do that very well and we're going to be taking some very concrete steps toward doing that in the near future. That is our next way to strengthen an already strong system. But again, I think we are, you know, in the very top echelon for safety and security given our buildings that we have and we're very pleased with how that's been going. And as you know, Officer Donberger does come periodically and gives you an update on the state of security in the district. I want to thank our families and remember, and I sent a letter out to all families today, there are resources in there to help, to help. And I do need the help of our entire community. If you see something that just doesn't seem right, OK2say is a great place that you can go. There have been over 10,000 reports to OK2say since it opened up. And I think this is something that, you know, anyone can use if they're not comfortable coming directly to us. But if something doesn't seem right, please report it. That is a critical, critical component to keeping our schools safe day after day. I'm going to leave it at that. I'd like to talk about a lot of other fun things, but I'm afraid I took all my time to talk about this one important thing and I think we'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Okay.
From what I've been observing, there are two types of threats. There are threats from the outside that really you can never predict. But a lot of these threats coming to Sandy Hook, coming to Florida, even Royal Post Office, people going postal, these were people coming from the inside. These were employees, these were students who felt aggrieved, who felt, and what we're hearing about Florida also is that a lot of the students and a lot of the faculty knew this student had been expelled and had tendencies towards this. So there are things, I don't know, I would hope that we as an organization are looking not only at the external threats that we don't know about, but the people that we have heads up on who potentially could have some grievances against us.
That's exactly what I was talking about when I was talking about when we see something and we need resources outside that we can get them and vice versa, you know, if there's someone out there. So it addresses both sides of the equation that you mentioned, but you did bring up something that I neglected to mention. And that is that the social emotional components of our learning, our school systems are very important parts of this. And, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of these measures built right into our system. One of the best ones we're using right now that is just, you know, relatively new for us the last few years is restorative practice, right? Because when something happens in a classroom or something happens in school, we now have a method by which we can restore the community. And what you're referring to sometimes is a member of the community who has fallen, has, something has happened, they may have been expelled, they may have, you know, something may have happened. And if there cannot be restoration, then, you know, you have an issue that can fester. But I think-
They could have even been bullied and felt that they want to have redress through-
It could be any number of things that happen in the school system, but we have a whole array of social emotional supports in our schools and not just with social workers, but built into the way that we do business. And I just picked out one example whereby we build community, we build avenues for restoration, we make sure that we find a way for our students to belong, to fit in because that helps their learning, but it also helps guard against some of these things.
Okay, then we will move into our board consent agenda. Jackie?
I move, yep, I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes closed session of February 1st, 2018. Request to approve minutes study session of February 1st, 2018. Request to approve minutes regular meeting of February 1st, 2018. Request to approve monthly financial reports. Request to approve dispersment reports. Approve bid number 1018, 2018 Roof Repairs renovation district wide in the amount of $82,500. Request to approve HR actions.
Do I have support?
Support.
Support from Mr. Ford, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Very good, okay. Well then, next we have a special report on our math pilot. You want to introduce her? Who's going to start it off? Looks like we got Christine DePilato?
He's here to introduce the star of the show.
Okay.
So I'm very pleased to be here tonight and to introduce to you Harleen Singh. Harleen, over here. Harleen came to Learning Services 379 days ago. And I say that because that's one year and two weeks ago. She joined us as the first teacher leader in Learning Services to help us move the needs of our teachers and our students forward in this district. And she has done an outstanding job. The fact that she has peers and colleagues here supporting her tonight, just out of their own interest in being here to support this movement, I think speaks volumes to the work that she's done. So tonight, she's going to share with you the work that they've done around the math pilot for our K-5 math programming and I'm sure that she'll be able to answer questions that you have and we're just thrilled to have her here. So Harleen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Harleen, if you can move the mic towards-
Oh, sure. Move it down to my level.
I can appreciate that.
That is not me. I'm on that, I shared it to that folder. Oh, here it is, perfect. That's all I have to do? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, first of all, for letting me have an opportunity to present to you tonight. Before I do so, I wanted to talk a little bit about our extensive process that we've had. I want to introduce some of my key members that have been part of the team. We have Samara Cohen, who is a kindergarten teacher at Conan. We have Katie Trescon, who is a fifth grade teacher at East Hills. And we have Katie, Kristin Lumsen, who is a fifth grade teacher at BH Middle School. So they are here, as Christine said, just to kind of show support of this process that we've done. And my hope is to just kind of walk you through all the work that we've done in the past year. And the main purpose of this committee has been to research, review, and implement an aligned K-5 math program. And so what I'm hoping to do, as I mentioned, is just kind of walk you through the process. Some of my friends at BIC I've been reporting to, so they are pretty familiar with this process, but I just wanted to share with you kind of what we've done and some of our findings as well. So just to give a little bit of background, as you know, the Common Core State Standards were adopted in 2010 and were fully adopted or implemented in the 2012 and 2013 school year. And at that point, we're using everyday math in our, in our district. But when we had moved to the Common Core Standards, many of the resources and many of the programs and vendors weren't kind of up to date with the Common Core Standards. So what Everyday Math had done, for example, and many other publishers has done it as well, was kind of realign some of their lessons and their units, but didn't truly implement what Common Core State Standards were intended to do. So at that point, the district had decided to provide time and space to the teachers to truly understand what the Common Core State Standards were all about. In addition to that, also give time to publishers, to give publishers an opportunity to understand and develop the resources so they were truly aligned to the Common Core State Standards. So for the past several years, teachers have spent a lot of time and a lot of professional development learning about the state standards. They have worked tremendous hours and put a lot of effort into developing lessons and units to align with the Common Core State Standards. So I feel it's safe to say that the teachers are very well versed in the Common Core Standards and understand what those represent and how to implement them in the classrooms. But what we did find was because we had no common resource, many teachers were pulling resources from a variety of places. And so although if you individually look at those lessons, they were very successful and they truly did implement what the Common Core Standards were intended to do, but because everyone was kind of pulling from different resources, we realized that there was an inconsistency from building to building, classroom to classroom, grade level to grade level. So when we had opportunities to meet as a math cohort, often the conversations were a lot about how are you teaching this and how do we teach this? And a lot of good conversation, but the deeper conversations of mathematical understandings were not present. So in this time as well, publishers had the opportunity to expand their own experiences and their own knowledge of the state standards and develop some resources that were aligned. So this is the time that the district felt it was the right time to do a pilot review, a recess review. So before we could just start looking at resources, there was a lot of background work that had to be done, so I kind of want to walk you through some of the stages that we went through. So first, we defined a timeline. So I met with LST and we talked about what our process would look like. I connected with our neighboring districts to learn about their similar type of timeline process that they went to because many of them have gone through a similar process. And I also connected with Oakland Schools to understand some of the tools and the rubrics that they were using or they suggested for other, other neighboring districts to use. So once we had conversations, we kind of learned from the other districts, you know, what were some things that they suggested for us to do? And I think they were, they were very receptive and very helpful because they all went through it, so it was great talking to them and connecting with them. After that, I met with my K-5 math reps and the very first thing, one of the first things that we did was develop a K-12 math vision. Prior to this, we had the 10 guiding principles, we still have the 10 guiding principles, and we have an overall philosophy, but we never really had a math vision. And the one thing that I had talked to all the districts and Oakland Schools who I've talked to, the first thing that they said to me is, "Make sure you have a math vision and when you start looking at those programs and those resources, make sure those resources align to your vision." It's very easy to kind of become excited by looking at those programs and those resources and it's very easy to get distracted by the beautiful pictures, but you need to make sure that it aligns to what you believe is your vision for the district. So we went ahead and we created our math vision and we've shared that with LST, of course, the building administrators, middle school, high school, so everyone has a chance to look at it and it's also linked there and I think I've also shared it at the BIC before. And also during those meetings, we talked about our strengths as math teachers, but we also talked about those areas that we needed a little bit more support. And this was a critical part of the process because when you're looking at resources, you want to make sure that that resource and that program that you choose is going to support you in those areas that we know we need support in. So we discussed those and then we also developed a plan, how do we recruit information from all K-5 teachers because this wanted to be an inclusive process. Once we did that, I went ahead and I was contacting publishers and getting samples from them. So this is the timeline that LST and I had created. And you can see Christine also mentioned, it's a pretty extensive process, but it, I'm pretty excited to say that every, every little deadline or kind of check-in point we had, we hit. And it's very, I don't think that's easy to say because often you set goals and you set a little timeline and it doesn't happen. So the credit goes to the team because they really worked hard and they were very diligent in this process. So it was exciting that we were able to kind of hit every single checkpoint. During the process, we were continuously giving the building administrators check updates and also meeting with BIC. So we created our resource review committee and that comprised of 22 support staff, teachers and administrators, and each building and each grade level K-5 was represented. So when we started the process, I started pulling, I had gotten about 15 to 16 different resources. And before I brought those to the team, I had kind of vetted them myself and I pulled out the ones that I truly felt did not align with our, with our philosophy or with the 10 guiding principles. So from about 15, we narrowed it down to eight and those are the eight that I presented to the team. And we used several rubrics and some of these are also linked here if you want to look at them. And those are the rubrics that we got from both Oakland Schools and different districts as well as what we felt were our needs in our district. So once we applied those, we were able to narrow it down to four. And at that time, we had the vendors come out and give us kind of a whole spiel of who they are and what they represent and what their program can offer us. So from that, then we narrowed it down to two, again, using our rubrics. So the two that we decided to pilot were Envision 2.0 and Math Expressions 2018. So once we had narrowed it down, we were excited because we felt like the real process was starting. So what we did was in August, I had all the pilot teachers come out and we had an intensive all-day training about both the programs. And we felt that was important because we wanted the pilot teachers to feel equipped and understand the program before they presented in front of their students. So we spent a full day truly diving into the program, both the print copies and the online access, because there's extensive online access for both of these. In addition to our first initial training, we also had check-in points. The reps were completely accessible to us. Anytime we had a question, they'd come to our buildings, they're available via phone call, email. They were great. So those check-ins kind of helped guide us throughout the process. And then in addition to the trainers coming to meet with us, we as a team also met four times. And I've outlined some of the check-in points that we've had and each time, we really were trying to collect different data points and talk about what else we needed to kind of help us move along this process. So in October, we met and we talked about the pluses and minuses and wonderings and that was critical because in the wonderings, we knew what else we needed to look for. And overall, we were very, at this point, very excited about both programs, felt that they were both very strong. And I think the biggest takeaway that the teachers felt was that there was a need to increase the rigor in our current math program, that was clear. In December, when we met- In December, when we met, we looked at student work. So, teachers brought in samples of student work and we used a protocol, kind of delve into that, because it's easy to look at a math sheet and say, "Oh, yeah, this child understands math. Two plus two is four." But we needed a protocol to kind of dig in a little bit deeper and understand the learning that that program is bringing to head. And so, we used a protocol to look at that. And then we also did a true framework. This framework was something that I learned about from Oakland Schools, from a math leadership committee there. And what it is, it's five dimensions that I really say that teachers should focus on in their classrooms. And if these five dimensions are brought to light, that's when you really have a productive, meaningful math learning experience. So, what we did was take that framework and see how those programs kind of bring to those five dimensions to light. And it just gave us an opportunity to reflect upon the type of thinking that was going on in both of those programs. And then in January, we applied another rubric, and we were looking for how these programs implemented the standards for mathematical practices. And what those practices are, they're basically, they're standards or practices that we want to encourage as teachers for our students to develop in their own understanding. So, then we kind of used this rubric to see how these were implemented in that program. Then, just on Monday, was our last check-in, and at that point, we looked at student feedback and we reviewed all the data. And the teachers can say it was a lot of data. They've done a lot of work. We looked at several different rubrics. And then we discussed both the strengths and some of our concerns for both the programs. So, the next few slides, I'm just highlighting some of the strengths that, of the programs, and also just incorporating some teacher and student feedback. So, these are some of the strengths, and again, I'm not going to read the list out to you, but just some of the key points were just, you know, the type of thinking that was involved in these programs, the different enrichment and differentiation opportunities that both of these brought to the table. I have a couple of quotes that I want to bring to you as well. So, this was from a second-grade teacher who was piloting Envisions. She says, "I've enjoyed exploring this program. It has challenged student thinking and supplied them with multiple strategies for problem-solving. The vocabulary acquisition has been tremendous. It has offered differentiation for all levels of learning, challenging the high and reteaching for the low. As with any program, it is not perfect, but I believe it has given my students the math understanding needed to be successful." Another one from some fourth-grade teachers. "Envision is a well-rounded program that would benefit all students. It's a well-designed and rigorous program." A few from Math Expressions. "Expressions focuses on understanding numbers and is great for lower achieving students. The best part of this program was the spiraling practice. It's a solid program." Now, this is my favorite slide of the presentation, because of student feedback. And if I could, I would have taken all the feedback that the students gave, because it was quite powerful. But a couple that I wanted to highlight, so in Envision, a lot of the students are talking about how it makes them think deeper, teaching the multi-step, reteaching. And I think my favorite quote is the last one. "I liked the book. I used to not be good at math. Then, when I got used to the math book, I started having great grades that even my sister was impressed." Very impressed, sorry. Math Expressions, we also had positive comments. "It's just right, not too hard." Explains math more. The quick checks. So, students also had positive feedback for both programs. So, overall, both of the programs are very solid, rigorous programs. I don't feel there's a wrong choice. I think at this point, we need to think about what's the better choice. And again, it's going to go back to what is our math vision and what is, you know, what do we want our students to look like? They both are very cohesive and have common vocabulary and clear learning targets, and I think those are some of the things that teachers brought up in the very beginning that we are lacking in our current program. So, the fact that both of these programs highlight those areas that teachers were feeling concerned about, I think, is victory in itself. But I know everyone wants to know which way we're leaning, and although, well, we still have a lot of learning to do, but I think it's safe to say that there is one that kind of is set apart a little bit at this point, so Envision 2.0. The things that teachers wanted to lift a little bit higher than, you know, kind of what they saw and what they feel, they feel like it really does give our students a deep opportunity to problem solve. They truly explicitly teach the mathematical practices. There's a very strong online component. There's a strong inquiry-based jumpstart to kick off the lessons. Again, it's very rigorous and challenging, and then many differentiation options. So, I think this is what teachers felt that was a huge strength for Envision. So, next steps, what we need to do is explore the different professional development opportunities, just like the pilot teachers were trained. We feel strongly about training all of our staff, so when we go into it, like I said, there's so many different components and parts to the program, to the resources, that I think we need to make sure we're doing fidelity, following it with fidelity, and so we want to make sure our teachers are properly trained. I shared preliminary cost with BIC, and so we need to obtain the final costs. We are in the process of collaborating with the reps to learn from the other districts who have implemented Envision 2.0 and look at their long-term data as well. And then, we're going to finalize our recommendation to LST and then review with my friends at BIC. And then, in March, we hope to come to you with a final recommendation. And this is the part where you guys can ask questions.
Thank you very much, Harleen.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the board?
You mentioned the last slide, other districts that use Envision 2.0. What are the, what are, can you give some examples, what are the other districts?
Sure. So, this is a very new program. This was released in 2017, so there aren't very many districts in the area that are currently using it. And so, that's why we're kind of collaborating with, I have a couple of emails and phone calls out to the reps to kind of find an opportunity to collaborate with some of the other districts in the area. And also throughout Michigan, since it is a new, sorry, throughout the nation, since it is a new program, we want to look at a bigger scope, because this has just been
Seems like just going through this pilot, that's professional development in itself, right? You must have learned so much.
It's been such a great, such a great learning experience, truly.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So, just curious, you've mentioned the true framework. What are the five dimensions?
Well, I can take you back and we can actually look at some of them together. And then you can also look at what the teacher's feedback was. So, they call them look fours, and they're things that we're looking for, again, in that, what we can highlight. So, the rubric that we use, and this is the teacher's feedback, so this is the rubric that we use, the kind of that we were looking for. So, what are students learning? Are students learning and how are these opportunities made? Looking at the cognitive demand, the access to the mathematical content, the ownership, how are students given the time and space to learn? And then, formative assessments.
Thanks.
Yep.
Yes, Jason.
Couple of questions. So, thank you for the presentation. One of my, my first question is, what's our math vision? And my second question is, did all of the teachers in the pilot get to work with both programs, so that each teacher could compare?
That's a great question. So, some teachers were piloting both programs, and some teachers only did one program. But that's why the check-ins were so important, because we had a lot of conversation and a lot of learnings. So, even though them, they themselves were not maybe part of the entire, like, the actual teaching of the program, there was so much conversation and so many rubrics that it was very easy to understand what each program was offering. And then, our math vision is over here. I mean, I can read it, but it's, it was, I think, the way that we started off was thinking about, again, what is, what is it that we think a good math instruction should look like? And from there, pulling out, you know, what we want our students to be able to learn. We also, I modeled some of this from, again, took it from the Ten Guiding Principles, what we already have established. And then I also did look at other districts and what their visions were and kind of seeing how we can incorporate and if it does fit with what we feel is our vision in the district.
I just wanted to note on that, there's some very clear ties here to Guiding Principles and our overarching goal and the Learning Goal 1. So, thank you. It's just nice to see those clear ties. Thank you.
Great job.
Any other board questions?
Edward.
Yes.
Yes, the differentiation opportunities that you were talking about, being a layman as far as, you know, instruction goes, does that mean that that provides you an opportunity to kind of customize things for a particular learner, to help them grasp and process it the way they process it? Is that what that means?
Yeah, I think a struggle that many teachers have, especially prior to having a set resources, that we know the standards, and I think teachers are now very, are experts in that, but to find different ways of helping students engage in that, that's something that teachers have been struggling with, because we don't have everything available to us. So, this program, particularly Envisions, really does give opportunities of accessing that same information in different ways for students. So, we are learning the same things, but the way I access it might be different, the way that you access it. And so, giving the opportunities for students to gain the same information in a different way.
So, providing opportunities or a combination of opportunities that is kind of catered towards this particular learner, who might be more a visual learner-
Exactly.
-or more of an auditory learner, or whatever the case might be. Okay.
Yep.
Wonderful.
And then, one of the other highlights is that there is this online component, where, you know, after, you can totally customize it as a teacher of saying, well, you might, I might, I know that you've showed success in this, in this standard, so I'm going to challenge you a little bit more and give you this to do. So, there is a lot of different ways of giving that differentiation, and so I think that was the piece that teachers really felt was key, because that is a piece that teachers at this point are struggling with.
Right. That's awesome. Thank you.
Well, Harleen gave a great presentation at our BIC meeting, and I know you're going to be coming back to us soon, so I appreciate that. Ed Howard.
I hadn't seen this vision before. This is, this is wonderful. And the work and the analysis and the structure that you guys have done over the last year or two is tremendous. But seeing the math, which obviously, in the way we learned it in school, was very content-based and learning very, on a step-by-step basis in terms of how to do things. I remember learning, doing square roots on a very mathematical using, before we even used slide rules. But looking at, could you, if you can flip back to the sheet that we were just looking at, but looking at not only focusing on the four Cs and bringing in not just the content, but the collaboration, the critical thinking into it, but also the equity lens and looking at all learners. And Ed was alluding to that, not only different ways, different types of students to learn, but really looking at students that are underachieving. We've got a third-grade reading objective, but in a sense, we could be looking at a third-grade math objective, a fifth grade, an eighth grade, a senior or a junior math thing, to try to really get all kids up to the levels that we would love them to be at. So, I applaud you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. We'll look forward to hearing back from you in another month or so.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. You guys did all this and still got your day job. That's fantastic.
Thanks so much for coming.
Yes.
All right. Next, we have a strategic plan update.
We have several of our cabinet members who are just going to give you a high-level overview. As you know, several times a year, as we move through our strategic plan, we like to give you an update of kind of some of the more recent happenings or accomplishments within that strategic plan. So, this won't take long. And in fact, some of them were already covered, if you will. I mean, if you think about our Learning Goal 1, this math pilot, the literacy presentation you had, really covered a lot of the updating for those areas. So, we're trying to be very efficient with our time and step through just a few of these items.
All right. We have Christine DiPilato.
I'm going to kick us off with Goal 1. So, igniting passion, fueling dreams, right, and creating a personal pathway for all of our students. So, you just heard from Harleen. Obviously, one of our goals is in numeracy in mathematics, and so Harleen did an excellent job of outlining where we are K-5 with the work that's going on. In addition to that work, K-5 for our Math Resource Review, we've also been spending quite a bit of time, 612, looking at things like common assessments and collaboration across our three middle schools and into our high school. So, there's been great work of her bringing those teams together while also maintaining this pilot team. So, a lot of work happening in mathematics. She already gave you the next steps for math. In literacy, you heard quite a bit about that at our study session tonight, so we laid this out well for ourselves. We let them do all the talking. But for literacy, just to highlight here at the board table, our Fontesem Penel Benchmark Assessment System, which is what replaced DRA, has provided us with a really incredible amount of data this year. It's teacher-driven. It's done one-on-one with a teacher and a student in a classroom. It allows our teachers to really have ownership of what that data looks like and to frame pathways for our students, for them to progress in literacy. We're very proud of that work. They've just finished their second round of assessments. It happens three times a year. So, that gives us data on that student growth, and we're looking forward to analyzing that with our teachers and using that data to inform instruction. Liza also outlined the writing work that's going on with a common rubric for writing, K-5, and then a different but common rubric for 68 as well. In addition to literacy, and before I let David go into talking about technology, two other pieces that we don't have slides for, but are very important to bring to the table here, is our work that we continue to focus on in equity and inclusion. And Learning Services continues to partner deeply with the work that we're doing with our Master Champions class that's happening this year, as well as our continued work with Restorative Practices and our Institute for Healing Racism. As we continue to work through those avenues, we're also exploring ways to more deeply bring equity and inclusion to our classroom through strategies with moves in pedagogy, looking at the neuroscience behind learning, establishing a deep sense of belonging for our students, and obviously, taking into account the components of health and well-being of all of our students, because we know that that plays a huge role to how they feel that they belong in a classroom. And then finally, one of our other goals is teacher leadership. And I believe that was fully put on display just a few moments ago. When we look at the work that Harleen Singh has taken on, when we look at the work that Liza Lottar brought to the table in our study session, when we listen to Noelle Collis when she comes to BIC to talk about science, Kristin Vigia in social studies, when we look at our three IB teacher leaders, our Gert teachers who are here every other Friday, learning how to lead professional adult learning in their own buildings, it's incredible. It's incredible what's happening around teacher leadership, and I couldn't be more proud of where we are at this mid-year term. And with that, turn it over to David.
That's like speed talking with Christine, isn't it? Let me get to my slide. So, mine's on the DCI. My focus on an update on the DCI, which is the Digital Competency Index. If you recall, a number of years ago, we started on a process or a journey to assess and evaluate our systems and how we support a tech integration, both inside and outside of the classroom. In particular, we focused on what would be our opportunity and performance gaps around that tech integration. Over those years, we developed metrics and measures to develop the DCI. The good news is that this will be moving off of the strategic plan moving forward, because it's just become operational now. It's not important strategically, per se. However, what will be, as we transition for this next coming year, we'll be focused on the one gap that has been consistent from the beginning, and that's around training and development of our staff. And so, we'll be focusing primarily on that going forward.
Any questions? Go ahead.
And we know that also during BIC and as we go through FFLA, we'll have some other updates where we get talking about devices and all of that kind of stuff.
Any more slides?
So, this is more on the strategic plan.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so, I'm Goal 2. And the one thing that I'm going to talk to you about tonight is how I feel when I hear that someone had a negative service experience in our district. That's about how I feel.
We got to frame this.
So, I've already spoken with you a lot about our service standards work that we've undertaken this year in the district. There will be ongoing work for us. Service standards and service systems are intentional, strategic, and engineered, and we are working to establish ours, as well as start that work across the district in multiple layers, in multiple departments. We did determine this year that Bloomfield Hills Schools is committed to providing a safe, caring, and resourceful service experience. So, our three service standards that we value most is safe, caring, and resourceful, and they are in that order to help staff prioritize those in their daily work and in their interactions with others. When we talk about creating service systems, we're actually mapping and identifying service moments, touch points, pain points-
moments, touch points, pain points, if you will, points of benefit to those that we serve. And we're trying to map those out in really pretty yellow, green, and red dots. So a green dot would be a positive service experience, yellow maybe not so much, and red is an oh-no, uh-oh, back to this, this is red. And so that's where we need to attack first. And so I'm working with many different departments across the district in this work. So far, it is really going well. The people are open to the process. We're having really rich dialogue about the service that we're providing, not just to our external stakeholder groups, but to one another, from department to department within the district. There's a lot of interactions that are happening that might not be as streamlined as we'd like them to be and might have some of those red dots in there. So we're cleaning that up. And ultimately, we're asking where we're promising service versus where we're actually delivering it. And then the last thing that I'll leave you with is this farm on the spot. I wasn't going to include this, but we had a really fun experience at West Hills and a super front experience at Conant. Both were very memorable for me personally and for the students. I'm just going to play about 15 seconds or 30 seconds of each, just so you can get a flavor, but I would encourage you to watch these on your own time if you can. Oh, maybe I'm not going to play them and maybe you just have to watch them on your own. Oh, no.
Here are a bunch of cigarettes. We have a pony in there. Because we have access to one of the greatest resources in the world is a farm right in Bloomfield Hills. We have to take patches of the pony. You had three in her from the farm, right to the classroom. It's part of a program we're calling Farms on the Spot.
A cow? But you know of Tony's name?
No.
I bet you someone remembers.
Janine?
Uh-oh.
So in this instance, the students were able to ask really great questions about the pony and about everything from her, her mane to why is she so little? So they were able to, it really sparked that curiosity. And then they were able to ask those questions directly with an expert from the farm and with the pony right there. So they could, they could touch her and they could see her. So that was very exciting. And then this one over at West Hills.
Yes, this is cinnamon. We have Jessica, Elisa, and we are here to just bring the farm to you guys on the spot a little bit. And so when was the last time you had alumni class?
Never.
Okay.
We brought cinnamon here today for you guys to get a little bit of agriculture in your classrooms, to be able to interact with her and ask us any questions that you might have. So if you want, I have some reasons your hands are ready. So I don't know names, so you tell me your name. Go ahead.
Well, we're tuck along.
You guys will be able to tuck. Okay?
I always wondered, what are these front teeth doing? Like, they're right here.
It's a good question. She's got really long front teeth, and she's got molars on the top and bottom of her mouth. But she has no teeth in the top front of her mouth. So those big one teeth come up high, and they actually help her grab leaves and branches from high trees. So she only eats up, and she very rarely eats down. Yeah.
Oh, what a disaster.
I'm going to take us to the end of this segment because there's a really special interaction that I want you to see at the end here. So you can see the students really lit up. And putting an animal in the classroom, it invited them to ask any question, no matter how big or small, about the animal's hooves, about their wool versus fur versus hair versus, you know, what is that thing growing all over its body? So very cool. And the next segment that you'll see, Dr. Glass helped bring cinnamon to Wing Lake today and read a llama book to the students of Wing Lake. And then the llama came in, and it was very magical. So that'll be the third segment. And then we'll be at East Hills at some point, can't spoil it, and certainly at BH. Any questions?
I just have to say cinnamon made a great visit to the Chamber of Commerce, too, which was pretty fun.
She did. And then she was tweeted and retweeted, and so she's, she's become quite famous.
Mr. Ford?
Yeah, maybe we could have, you know, one of our classes take on a project of developing like a pony diaper or something. I think it's great, you know, that you bring the farm into the classroom in such a real way. And the last scene, I mean, that's Bloomfield Hills Schools, right there. That's Bloomfield Hills Schools. So in the interim, until we get to where you're personally satisfied, since you're leading this, if somebody is not having a safe, caring, and resourceful experience in Bloomfield Hills Schools, who do they call?
So I would encourage them first to reach out to the person that they feel most comfortable at their building level. That might not be their child's teacher. It might be their child's teacher. That might be their bus driver. That might be their principal. It's the person that they feel comfortable sharing that experience with because it's quite uncomfortable to share an uncomfortable experience. And we don't want to make it further uncomfortable for them. So they should find the person within the district that they feel most comfortable sharing that with. And then eventually, that, that does make its way through the proper channels so that we can hopefully improve that service experience. And we are seeing people get a little more comfortable with sharing that with us, but that's, that's a shift in culture. And so we'll, we will get there. We will get there.
That's great.
Any other questions? Get another goal for us?
We do. Oh, sorry. But now I'm stuck.
Okay. By myself, I am not goal three. We actually have a team. So human resources and physical plant services and finance all encompass goal three. Basically, budget balancing actions, I'm going to be presenting a little bit later on the budget, so I won't spend much time on this slide. There's also information that talks about the actions we've had over the last several years on our webpage. Objective two, we talk about the nature center, the farm, and recreation all together. And so you certainly just saw a lot about how we are bringing the farm right into the classroom. In addition, what we are doing is going through a strategic planning process. So we talked about this a year ago, and now we've all been engaging in it. There's a specific group that got together, and there's yet another meeting that will be scheduled before we finalize the recommendations or the outcomes of the strategic plan. And it's basically about all of this, and we are calling that, isn't that cute? That piglet was born this past Friday, by the way. I took that picture. And outdoor education is right now how we're looking at it because we really do have two gems in our community. And that's the strategic partnership that we have ongoing with Michigan State University Extension is key, along with our farm educational leader, Alan Jaros, and Dan Badgley at the Nature Center. So we're very excited to see what those outcomes and the recommendations are. And objective three, Brian Goby.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we've been over this slide before, with the exception of the very bottom bullet. So I'm going to jump right down to that. And that's the replacement of our sinking fund, which will, that vote will take place in May. Thank you for approving the roofing repair bids tonight. Today, we did open about $1.5 million worth of additional summer work that will begin post-bid interviews tomorrow. That was based on a budget about 1.7, so we got really good turnout. We got really good numbers. I think the highlight of that is almost all of our parking lots get touched, the new parking lot at the high school, and the improvement to the crosswalk at the high school. And just a reminder that there'll be no rate increase for that replacement sinking fund. And thank you to all the taxpayers, which includes myself and all of you, of course. Any questions?
Keep on going.
I think that's it.
So we have had a strategic plan that has been a 10-year strategic plan. So this is sort of the beginning of the, of the update for our, for the process of what we're doing and refreshing the plan.
Yeah, it was a 10-year plan. We're in 17, 18, and we've just crossed into 18. So we're kind of coming toward the end of that plan. We'll be taking a look at, you know, next steps to see if we want to do another longer-term plan or continue to work through this one. I think that'll be, we're making some decisions about that now and recommendations to you. But we have to stay, you know, either way, we need, we need a mechanism to keep working this work forward. We feel like there's, I'm really speaking extemporaneously here, but I, you know, I feel like the vision that we've created through that plan, we've continued to touch it and be faithful to it. You know, my sense is, is it's the right vision, the right work. It's, it's some of the strategies are the one, and then we've always refreshed the, you know, objectives and strategies. So, you know, I'd be comfortable continuing those, but I think that we're going to have a chance through our Bloomfield Forward work to talk a little bit, you know, our, engage our community more and see if there's more that we need to consider that we haven't considered. But in my experience, which is only my experience, I have found that it's best to keep moving with what you're doing and stick, stay, you know, keep working something with fidelity. And if it, and rather than completely changing too many things at once. But the key is working through your plans.
Well, thank you to all of you for, for bringing the ideas on the strategic plan update to us. So we're going to move into general discussion now. And this is a little bit different from our normal way of doing business. And it's a little bit of a deviation from our board bylaws and how our typical operations are because our Board of Education meeting procedures call for us to have information to proceed action. And we typically would study something in advance through our committee process or study session before we proceed to doing something at the board table. But the shooting in Florida yesterday sort of pushed some conversation that we haven't had together. And so this is our opportunity as a board to have some conversation together. Our legislature in last fall, our, the state senate passed a package of bills. They are Senate bills 584 to 586, which will allow people who obtain enhanced concealed pistol licenses to carry concealed weapons into local schools. And that has passed through the Michigan senate, but it's still pending for the Michigan House. And our Michigan Association of School Boards last December did send out an email to all the local boards across the state, asking us to take a position in response to these bills. And a number of districts have done so. And they, I did some research today and looked at a number of them. And I have shared one that was, based on one that was passed by one of our neighboring Oakland County districts. We've looked at one from Ann Arbor. I looked online at ones from Battle Creek. And so I'd like for us to have a little bit of conversation about what you think about this. And if you think that we ought to be moving forward to take some action this evening. So I've opened some conversation here. I invite you to share some comments.
Yeah, I feel in light of what happened yesterday, I think it's imperative, especially with what's going on up in Lansing, that this is the time, you know, as a school district and a school board, that we take a position, you know, and let our legislators be heard on how we feel with Senate bills 584 to 586. You know, I feel that it's, it's important in order to protect, you know, the students in our community, you know, that, that we oppose, we, you know, we have a resolution to oppose these Senate bills in support, especially of our local legislator who voted against this. I think that's important as well, and to let it be known, you know, what our position is.
Yes, Senator Nolenberg did vote against this in his Republican caucus in the senate. He was a lone Republican who opposed this bill, and I want to thank him for that leadership. That was, I'm sure, not an easy position for him to take. And I want to engage and help our other local house members to understand how important this is to us, that we want to find every way we can to protect our students. And having more guns in schools is not my opinion the way that should be done. I think having police officers are the people who should have the way to protect our kids. Mr. Ford?
Yes, I think it's highly unwise and inappropriate for anyone other than law enforcement officers to have weapons on school grounds. We've had this longstanding relationship with the police department. Our staff have been professionally trained by the, the police officer that we retained to be our consultant on this. And I fully trust him and his colleagues on the police force, and I completely trust the training that they provided our staff. And I feel that we are doing, you know, everything that is, could be reasonably expected of us to protect our staff and our students. And I have no interest whatsoever in having anybody other than law enforcement officers on our property with guns at any time for any reason whatsoever.
Mr. Barron?
I looked at it and I must have misread this. This is the legislature saying we should allow people to bring guns into the schools. And I read it again. I said, no, 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 that's got to be wrong. I don't know that I can share all my thoughts because I remember George Carlin saying there's seven words you can't say on television.
And we said about five.
And a lot of them would be going through my mind and coming out of my mouth right now. This insanity. It's crazy. I can't believe somebody actually brought this to the legislature. It came out of committee and made it to the floor.
And passed the senate.
I better stop speaking.
I guess, building upon that, the fact that not only did they take it at the, take it up at the legislature, but it specifically prohibits Michigan public school districts from, from banning weapons themselves. So we're at the mercy of, of some very distressing actions at our state. It's, it's, it's just terrible.
Mr. Barron?
Obviously, this came up very quickly. But when I talked to President Van Ooyen today, I mentioned, and she and I just came back from Washington, DC, there are some bills going around in DC, HR 58 in the House Concealed Carry Reciprocity Act. What this is saying is, if you have the ability to carry a weapon in, and you get authorized in one state, no matter how low the threshold, whether you're trained, whether you have any background, criminal background, doesn't matter, whatever one state passes, all 49 other states must recognize that. They equate it to a driver's license. Right now, if you get a driver's license in one state, that applies to other states if you cross state lines. They want to do the same thing with gun permits. So if you're, you know, you take a lot of states that have a lot lower threshold of carrying a loaded gun concealed, in one state, Michigan would be forced, let alone our district, the entire state of Michigan would be forced to accept that. This resolution here is one step in a, in a very long battle that we and Bloomfield Hills Schools should be taking on.
I guess one battle at a time. But this is one, Mr. Proteer?
As an American, I believe in the right to bear arms just as much as the next American. I just don't see a place for them in schools if you're not a police officer sworn to protect and serve in that school. So to me, that's, this is just a ridiculous bill that passed in the senate. And I am vehemently opposed to it personally. So to me, that's, this is just a ridiculous bill that passed in the senate, and I am vehemently opposed to it personally.
So what I'm hearing is some interest in moving forward with some action. Would you like to make a suggestion?
I'd like to make a motion to have a resolution of the Bloomfield Hills School Board for opposition to Senate bills.
So we'll put that as board business?
Yes.
Right, so we will add a resolution on the gun bills as board business number ten E. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, at this time, we'd like to invite those for public comment, and I do have two cards here. I'd like to invite Lisa Efros, who has children at BHHS and BHMS, who wants to address us on the issue of these Senate bills. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for the prompt passing of the resolution. I just, I'm shocked as well that it made it through the senate. I wanted to share with you something that my ninth grade son wrote. He wrote an email to Representative McCready, who is our representative and who will be one of the representatives to vote on the bill when it crosses into the house. He, this was part of a really innovative assignment you should know that the high schoolers did in their, after advisory directed, directed, not directed study, it'll come to me. Anyway, the assignment was to analyze a war or a concept or a political or historical concept, premise, something that led to war, something that changed history that would be outdated today. So my son chose the Second Amendment. And in doing that, they had to present something to the class, it could be a PowerPoint, it could be any kind of project. He presented a PowerPoint, and I wish I could share that whole thing, but I can't. And he sent an email a week after the senate had already passed these three pieces of legislation. By the way, you can still carry weapons in school, you can't carry concealed weapons so long as the school is defined as a safe zone. The senate bills would prohibit schools from enacting any legislation more prohibitive than what the state is. So if you can carry a concealed weapon under the laws of Michigan, you can carry it in the schools. Okay, that doesn't mean you can't open carry in schools, which right now you can. And you only have to be eighteen to, to open carry rifles. So you have students who can legally open carry weapons into class. And let me tell you, if you think that that seems like it'd be easy to detect, imagine these students carry around their backpacks, their sports bags, their instruments, and a rifle is in there with it. I mean, I'm telling you, it's frightening enough as it is. So when you said we haven't gone far, we have not gone far enough. This is just one thing that's, you know, seems as crazy to all of you as it does to the parents, but what exists today is still crazy as it is. Anyway, I'm not going to read his whole email, but I will read the part that, one of the parts that I like the best. He says, it's my ninth grader. "I hope when the senate bills reach the House of Representatives for a vote, you will honor the democratic process and vote for the good of all the people you represent, including the students of Bloomfield Hills, who would like to be able to remember high school as a place where at least some of the innocence of our youth is preserved. Do not allow more liberal gun laws to threaten our classroom safety or even our enjoyment of football games and school dances. If we need guns to protect ourselves from bad people who have guns, isn't the obvious solution to eliminate access to guns. Saturating the market with dangerous weapons cannot possibly make anywhere safer. Schools, of all places, were solving problems without violence, as taught in preschool, is the last place where more liberal gun laws should be enforced." I want to say the response he received wasn't as articulate. It was basically that Representative McCready doesn't sit on the committee that reviews this, and he has not yet formed an opinion as to how he'll vote. I did want to say, he's, he's been rescheduled and he's now going to meet on April twenty-third with members, it's an open meeting, well, open with pre-registration, but it's limited to forty people. I don't have any access and have no way of knowing how many people have already registered. I'd like to ask the board to please open that meeting to anybody that wants to attend. And if they want to attend at the last minute, please don't turn anyone away. Because if anyone has anything to say to him face to face, especially about the gun issue, I just don't think he can hear it enough. He hasn't, his own words, he hasn't made up his mind yet. So I just want to appeal to whoever sets the parameters for that meeting, that that be changed. I also, you know, I, I want to say, I don't see this as a partisan issue. I don't see this even as a political issue, I see it as a safety issue. And I'm wondering if, I, I don't know how we define what is and isn't political and what PTOs and PTAs and PTOCs are allowed to say or endorse, but, you know, I would love to be able to go forth before the house reviews these bills because, you know, it's already passed in the senate, crazy as that is, with a united front, that we all stand together against this, against violence in the schools.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks.
I may also have a card for Max Newman, who wants to talk with us on the same issue.
Hi, my name is Max Newman, I'm an attorney in the area, and I have children at Wey, BHMS and BHHSS. So I've got the district reasonably well-covered, at least, you know, as far as my neighborhood goes. And I've been listening to you all, and thank you for passing that resolution. Obviously, it's a step in the right direction. And I listened to Ms. Efros as, as well, and appreciated what she was saying. I think, you know, I think yesterday has basically kicked me into action. It's something that I feel like I can't sit back and, you know, write Facebook posts or do the very least possible on this issue anymore. I have some experience with lobbying, I've been a citizen lobbyist on, on various issues for about fifteen years now. And I think that may be something that is needed, and it's something that I can, I've never formed a grassroots organization or anything, but I can try to do so with, with parents. If someone with a weapon gets to the front door of the school, it's a disaster. It's already a disaster. The training from Officer Donberger has helped, you know, train us for what to do to mitigate a disaster. But the whole concept of, you know, armed teachers or armed janitors or armed students, God forbid, you know, being the ones to protect their fellow students from somebody who's already breached the school and presumably started firing, basically when they get in, is, is just horrifying. What needs to happen is there needs to be resources and focus on preventing these things from happening before someone ever gets on the school property, in the school building, anywhere near the kids. I liked very much your email today, Dr. Glass. I thought it was very appropriate on, on the lines, the information lines and the communication. I think that's really important. And I think there really needs to be a lobbying effort from parents and from the community on, on a couple of different things. First, resources, and obviously Officer Donberger can help us there. But, you know, it's like preventing terrorist attacks, and these are a form of terrorist attack in, in a lot of ways. And the way you prevent them is not by guarding everything. You can't guard everywhere all the time, as you said. Students are out at recess, students, you know, are in an uncontained environment. It's almost impossible to think of, of how you could guard that. What you need is the intelligence beforehand of what, who is likely the target of it, and how do you intervene to prevent something like this from happening? So I think there needs to be a lobbying effort to the state legislature rather than bizarre solutions like, you know, stopping a bad guy with a gun with a good guy with a gun. When, when, you know, once the bad guy with the gun is in the door, you, it's already so bad that mitigation is, is already tragic. You know, you've already, you've already reached a disaster point. So I think there need to be more resources for prevention outside of, of the school district and outside of the buildings and outside of security, but rather intelligence. And I think that's something that the legislature needs to hear. The second thing, and frankly, I, I sent an email to Ms. Van Ooyen earlier today, and I was not familiar at that time with these bills. And I think I'm surprised, I, I have an idea of what the genesis of these bills are and why they passed the, the state senate, and, and there were similar bills that have actually been introduced in the house. And I, I think there needs to be two things done, one is lobbying and the other is sunshine. Because I think a lot of people's reaction is going to be the same as Mr. Banks. And, and everybody else's frankly, I don't mean to signal them out, but I think there'll be a lot of use of George Carlin's words. And so I think sunshine is, is an appropriate thing because the way legislation works, a lot of times, it doesn't get voted down, it just gets buried. And I'd love to see this legislation get buried. And the second thing is that we, in, in the event that there is a vote, we need an all-out lobbying effort. We're, we're late to get started. You know, it has already passed one house, we don't have, you know, all, an organization formed or anything else. But better late than never, and better something than nothing. And so, you know, to the extent I can, I'd like to offer services or work in collaboration with, with the board to, to do what we can to, to get people thinking realistically about what the solution to this problem is and what is a hindrance and not an actual solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Newman. We've got one more person?
Yes, I just want to mention this, as I remember.
One second, you got a card? Yep. So we don't dialogue during public?
No, not dialogue, I just wanted to add something to the conversation.
Well, let's, let's finish public comment.
Hi, my name is Jim Cook, I'd like to start by volunteering to be part of that grassroots movement because I, I too feel like I've been kicked in the gut, and I'm going to try and not get too emotional here. I'm a father of four, I've been in the district for twenty-eight years. I've put all my kids through Bloomfield Hills schools, I've got two that are finishing up high school now, two that have been through Andover and Loser and graduated, and they're successful and in other states doing their jobs. I come from a long line of teachers, all the way back from, from grandpa and my mom. I married a teacher, I've got three sisters that are teachers, I've got four nieces and nephews that are teachers. So what happened in Florida, including my nephew, who left Lansing six years ago to go teach down in Florida, and he could, he could have been, I'm sorry, he could have been there as a part of that shooting. So I'm disturbed by, by what's happened, and I'd like to see us take some proactive measures. And I want to start by applauding the board for what you've done tonight already. What you've demonstrated is phenomenal. Your decisiveness, your leadership and your action in calling out this issue and, and making a resolution and pushing it forward through the senate is, and the house and anybody that'll listen, is critical. And I applaud your leadership, that's why I've kept my kids in the district all these years. I could have gone private, and I chose not to. I'm a product of public, and I think we can do the right things here, and you've demonstrated that to me. So let me say that I think we have a national crisis here. This isn't just Bloomfield Hills, right? The shootings that are occurring all over the country are a national crisis. And we need to address the root cause. The root cause isn't guns. The root cause is kids struggling that can't get through school, that are dealing with ADD, ADHD, depression, broken homes, broken families, whatever the situation of the root cause might be. And Cynthia, I love you and your husband's quote back to Mr. Rogers. I grew up with Mr. Rogers, not really, but I grew up close to him, watching TV with him. And I encourage any of you that haven't seen his speech to the Congress, I believe, from, from many, many years ago, to watch it. It is wildly moving, and we are overdue for that kind of commitment to our kids again for after-school care. You guys do a phenomenal job of taking care of our kids from seven o'clock till four o'clock. And what we're missing in the country is a program that takes care of them from four o'clock till mom and dad can get home. I come from two working parents, I've been a global consultant for years, and it's a challenge with my wife running a business for twenty years to be home and be with the kids and take them to all their after-school programs. We really have to focus on what our kids' needs are. And I think we have the, the skills, the leadership, the talent and the insight in Oakland County and in Michigan to solve this problem for the country, I truly believe that. We've also got a state crisis. I don't know about you, but, but seeing Amazon not even put Michigan on the top twenty of states that deserve a second headquarters is shameful and embarrassing. We have such phenomenal talent in this state, and we can't demonstrate to an industry leader like Amazon that we can build the talent to feed their job pool is shameful. And I think the government should be embarrassed and needs to take action. And I think we're doing what, what we can do, and I think we can support that a little bit better. We've also got a local crisis. Our kids are working hard. I've seen my two older kids go through the program, one struggle, one do wildly well. They made it through persistence and Calvin Coolidge's focus on getting through and are successful in their own rights, very successful in their own rights. My younger two, same thing, one wildly successful, one struggling a little bit. The pressure they put on themselves and we as parents and our culture and our community put on them is absurd. If they didn't have two supportive parents, I can't tell you what they wouldn't, what they would do if I wasn't working from home every day, and I had the benefit of doing my job from my house to watch them come home, to pick them up, to bring them to the next activity, and to, to make sure they're taken care of. So we really need an after-school program that takes care of these kids. And we have a phenomenal opportunity in here and leadership in industry that is looking for somebody to take the charge and build a program that develops the workforce of the future. The Fords, the GMs, the Chryslers, I could list thirty other companies. The state and the government have a great need to build talent in Michigan. I've had the great pleasure for the last ten years of being a mentor of our world-class robotics program here in Bloomfield Hills. We are the number two team out of four hundred and fifty-one teams across the state. And Michigan is a shining example of robotics across the world, truly. The World Robotics Competition is coming to Detroit, the robots are coming in April down to Cobol Hall. There will be three hundred thousand students from across the world convening in Detroit to compete and show us their talent. And we can show what great talent we can do. I've been the entrepreneurship mentor as part of the robotics program, I've started up several companies, I've started up several divisions and departments for global companies all over the United States. I spend my nights, Paul knows because he's involved too, Dr. Glass knows because he's a great supporter, I spend three hours my Monday, Wednesday, Friday nights, yeah, Friday nights, and most of my days Saturday during the first six months of January through June, competing, coaching, mentoring kids in what they can do with the right guidance in after-school programs. The five founding members of our robotics program, one is an Apple designer that built most of your iPhone tens. From nine years ago, he graduated and put the program together in Bloomfield Hills. Another one is writing the autonomous programs for Uber, for their cars. A third one is working for Elon Musk, building rockets through SpaceX and sending them into space and landing them environmentally friendly back on our earth. Just three examples of the first five. My son graduated from Purdue with an industrial engineering degree, he's working for a medical device company, and he's optimizing plants and operations to build medical devices more efficiently, more safely, and delivering to the consumer. These are just four out of many stories I can tell you about the success of a wildly dedicated and focused after-school program. So what I'd like to see, if any of you grew up with the YMCA besides Mr. Rogers, we need the YMCA of the twenty-first century. We really need to have a program where We really need to have a program where, much like the schools are consolidated and we have one grade high school, we need one great after-school program, a world-class after-school program where we can take all this steam, interest, science, technology, engineering, arts and, and combine them together, together and give the pla- the kids a place to go where educators, much like yourselves, can focus on what they're doing after school when mom and dad can't be home and aren't around and can assess who is the high-risk kid that's throwing off signals through social media that everybody knows is about to do what he's, he or she is about to do. And we don't have that opportunity here. So I'd like to, I'd like to suggest to the board that we either leverage the, the grassroots effort here or we pull together a small funded committee that looks at this issue very closely and determines what's a world-class program look like and how can we help support that with the resources of one of the, the wealthiest and more, most beneficial cities, counties and states in the, the United States. So.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comment. Um, so we move on into our board business and the first item is our 2017-2018 mid-year budget revision. Tina?
Yeah, we'll pull this up in a moment. Um, so for our mid-year revisions, uh, we've been working on those and a couple of weeks ago, we had a study session where we talked more in detail about the process and also the revisions. And now, uh, this is the recommendation to the board for your approval for the general fund and the special revenue funds. Those are the funds that are, must have a budget by law. And then in the middle of the year, we finalize many, many estimates, um, that we need to make in June before July 1st. And then, once we get to this point in the year, things like enrollment and staffing become finalized and we revise from there. So, starting with the general fund. The general fund original budget landed at about $20.8 million in fund balance and the mid-year revisions, uh, results in a fund balance of about $19 million. And the percent fund balance of expenditures is key because the board policy requires 15 to 20% and we are still above 20% for this year. On the special revenue funds, special revenue funds include the International Academy, the center program, our Recreation Community Services Program, food services and the co-curricular endowment fund. So for all of those combined, the original budget had a loss of about $26,000. Some of that is planned. The International Academy is a self-sustaining fund, a consortium of districts, and so sometimes there are planned costs there. Uh, the center program is also its own separate fund and that is a tuition-based program as well. Um, the mid-year budget is not too far off from that, about a loss of about $75,000. So, in both instances, we're about 6.5, 6.6 million dollars in combined fund balance. The details of both of the slides that I just presented are also in the board package and part of, uh, what is online, which are the, the details for the general fund and also each special revenue fund, uh, that's in the package. Highlights, two slides on the general fund, looking at what changed to go from about a break-even, which is the top-line original budget, uh, to our $1.7 million loss. Uh, the, the primary driver of that is staffing. So our net staff compensation change is up about 1.9 million. Um, most of that is comprised of instruction and I highlighted some of the key added positions at the elementary, middle school and high school level in this slide. But what's also important is we had an enrollment projection of about 50, an increase of 50. We exceeded that by about 19 in the general fund. So for that total of 69, it is very hard on a year-to-year basis. We actually don't add in staffing. And there was a year where we went up even more than that and the enrollment change was spread out across the building, so much so that hardly any staffing was needed. In this particular case, we just don't know which classrooms and which buildings it's going to hit. We actually did need to increase staffing. And instruction is our core and we're not going to ignore that. Uh, the high school, for instance, had a very large middle school class coming in, but the way those students came out of the middle schools was so spread out, it didn't allow for a reduction in the middle school, as an example. Um, beyond that most significant item, that really accounts for most of it, uh, but just a couple other highlights would be, um, a, a Supreme Court decision where there was 3% withheld from employees during a couple of year period back in 2010-12. It was deemed unconstitutional and what that, the result of that is that all school districts need to refund that 3% back to the employees. And for us now, uh, the FICA tax will be due the employer's share, so that's about $238,000. That's been a subject of a lot of conversation. So if any of you had questions, I wanted you to know that. Um, other than that, uh, the main highlight on this slide actually has no net impact, but we all know as the retirement reforms went into place, there is a large amount that is actually funded through the state's budget and comes off the top. We actually receive the money, it goes right back. And that amount now that is included in our total revenue or total expenditures is about $7.4 million, which is significant. Um, if, uh, the reforms or if we didn't have that underfunding situation and we didn't have this significant, uh, pension rate, um, that is paid in total, um, I, we've actually been keeping our expenditures pretty level and decreasing over a, a span of years. So instead, it looks like it's increasing a lot and it's, a lot of that is increasing because the amount of the pension contribution is increasing. Two more slides, just looking at trends. So the enrollment trend from 2009-10 to this current year, in blue, the very top line is our total enrollment in the district and we can see it's had an upward trend, which is wonderful and, uh, just speaks to what we are all about and everyone's noticing and folks are moving in as we just heard from the gentleman, uh, choosing to come here. And then the green line is our general fund. The gap in between are our center program students. And you'll see that gap's actually narrowing. From the first year presented to the last, it's down about a third. Um, but the, the trend is up, that's what's key. And this last slide is a trend of revenue expenditures by fiscal year. And as I indicated, each year, the amount of this pension contribution that we have to reflect as a revenue, which is the blue line and expenditure, which is the red line, continues to increase. Uh, but what's key really, because we have to really account for that a little bit in the trend, is just looking at the gap. So we're trying to do our best to, um, match our expenditures and our revenue in line with the fund balance policy. So to the extent, we ended last year at about 24.1%, um, that gave us some latitude to continue on focusing on that strategic plan and mission and then, of course, taking care of our instructional staffing just based on the way the enrollment fell this year. Any questions?
So, um, before we get into questions, I'd like to add a motion on the table. We have a motion before us on the budget.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the mid-year budget revision for fiscal year 2017-18 as detailed in the attachments.
And do I have support for the mo- motion?
Support.
Support for Mr. Barron. So, questions for Tina? It's pretty straightforward information, a lot of which we've seen before as it's been, been developed.
Yeah, we've had several study sessions to discuss the, our question.
She's been keeping us up to date along the way, so, um, is there any additional concern or question for Tina at this point? Now I'll call for the motion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Tina.
Thank you.
It's a lot of, a lot of work goes into that, so we really appreciate it. Um, the next item is the, uh, vote that is needed on the, for the Michigan Association of School Board Board of Directors. So, um, Michigan, Michigan Association of School Boards, um, has directors that are chosen by region, uh, around the state. We are part of, uh, Region Eight and we were given the, um, profiles of eight, of, uh, four individuals, um, who are, uh, have, are running for that position. Um, I've had some conversation with some of you about that. Uh, the incumbent person, um, is Don Hubler, who currently serves on the Macomb Intermediate School District and was previously on the Lance Cruz Board for many years. He also serves on National School Board Association. Um, there are three other individuals who have submitted their name. Burgett McQuiston from Lake Orion.
Robert McGlacklin.
McGlacklin. Pomponio. Um, so after conversation with some of you, do I, can I have a motion, please?
I move that Don Hubler be submitted as Bloomfield Hills Schools Candidate Vote for Michigan Association for School Boards 2018 Board of Directors Election for Region Eight.
Support from Mr. Bank. I will say that I did talk with Mr. Hubler this afternoon and, um, asked him if he would, and he has been very excited about the prospect, about coming to share with us some thoughts and, and gather input from us, um, as our representative. But MASB hasn't really been very good about reaching out and, and asking us for that, for their, for input. So, Mr. Hubler is, um, very excited at the prospect and, um, open to the idea of sharing minutes and, um, we will pursue that conversation in the future. So, any other comments about Mr. Hubler or, um, this election?
One other comment about Mr. Hubler. Not only is he, uh, or I think he still is on the Lance Cruz Board and he also is on the Macomb Indi- the ISD, the intermediary school district.
Mm-hmm.
And is on MASB's board previously and could be in the future, depending upon how the votes go, uh, in the other districts. But also, he's on the National School Board Association's Board of Directors. So he's really very vertically integrated, um, and really can see not only, uh, Oakland and, and tri-counties views, but the state and the national view. So it, um, it would be very beneficial to have him, uh, continue on in that position.
Yep. And, and just, just to add, I work with him. I, I do some work, uh, in downtown, uh, as part of my, my other job, well, my, uh, paying job. Um, you know, one of the boards I sit on. So, um, so I work with him. He's, we're involved in the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, uh, and he, we, you know, we focus a lot on education for Southeast Michigan and I've seen him in action and he's a real advocate and would, you know, is a, is a tremendous, um, asset.
Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, next is request to approve the course description book from Learning Services. Christine.
Margaret Schultz was here, um, at our last board meeting to present to you the changes for that, that course description book. And I don't believe we had many questions at that time. We certainly had a thorough discussion of all of those, um, topics at BIC. So this is our formality to, um, request that it's approved for next school year.
May I have a motion?
A, a motion to, uh, approve the 2018-19 High School Course Description Book.
Second.
Support.
Um, support from Dr. Alsayed. Um, any questions, comments from the board? We've had a chance to hear from, from Margaret about this previously. Any additional? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, and then the next, she's back again. We've got, uh, graduation requirement changes.
That I'd give you your fill of me tonight. Um, we are, um, the, the language in this, um, is a little misleading. The graduation requirement request, the actual graduation requirements themselves are not changing. Um, this is specifically about, uh, PE and health and as it's written in our, uh, graduation requirements, we're asking to change the language that defines those two credits. Um, currently, students are required to take health as a half-credit. They're also required to take basic PE as a half-credit with 1.0 credit in addition of PE electives. Um, and so the change that's being, um, a- asked for is to remove the requirement of basic PE. Instead, students would still have to take the half-credit of health, but then they'd have one and a half credits of PE elective that they can choose from. Basic PE will remain an option for all students and for many students, it will be the most appropriate option for them when they enter high school. But for some of our students, they have an extensive background in physical activity and sport. And so this gives them the opportunity to choose electives that better fit with their interests. Um, and that also couples with the new courses that you just approved. Um, there are many new electives in PE coming up for next year to accommodate those students' selections.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the modification of the language in the graduation requirements for 2018-19.
Motion from Mr. Palatier. Do I have support? Some, support from Mr. Cohen, whoever. Um, so, uh, comments, questions?
Just one question. Um, if a student's involved in, uh, a sport, does that qualify for the, in the new graduation requirements?
Yes, so, um, as in, as in the past, there is a, a waiver, um, opportunity for students and there's a process in place through the Guidance Counseling Office where they honor a variety of different, um, sports or activities for students, um, and that will remain.
Okay.
So, uh, anything else? Then all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. All right, and finally is our, um, added business item is the adoption of a potential resolution from the school board in opposition to Senate Bills 584 to 586. So, um, I've brought you a, a suggested draft of, uh, resolution. Um, this is our opportunity to discuss the resolution that I've presented to you, but there are, we certainly have the opportunity to change the language if anybody, um, has any suggestions. Um, we could put a motion on the table and then we can debate it. Though, uh, and we need a lot of, to first start with a motion.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the proposed resolution in opposition to Senate Bills 584 and 586.
Support.
Okay, it's been proposed and supported. Um, I would like to hear your comments.
Let's pass this and then let's take a stand. Let's take a stand. Uh, I went to law school, I'm not a constitutional scholar, but this just smells wrong from a constitutional standpoint. I want to see this Board of Education adopt, uh, change our policies and prohibit exactly what they're trying to limit us from doing. And it's time that we pass a resolution and prohibit open carry in the schools? And if they're trying to say that we can't, uh, pass a resolution that would allow us to prohibit this, let's pass a solution and prohibit this now. And if somebody wants to sue us, take us to court over it, let them. We'll hire a team of lawyers. We've got a lot of good lawyers around here. Got one right over here. Uh, heard him speak earlier, I was impressed. Um, let's take a stand. Let's really do something. This is a piece of paper, let's take action. Might be unconstitutional and maybe it's not.
Mr. Ford?
I'd like to remind my fellow board members that the Second Amendment states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Um, I support the Second Amendment. I own my own firearm. Um, and I think it's appropriate to have a firearm if you're going to use it in appropriate fashion. Uh, this bill says nothing about where these people can bear their arms. It does not say that they can take those arms, um, you know, in, on school property. And we all swore a fiduciary oath when we took responsibility, uh, to sit on this Board of Trustees, um, that we would support the Constitution of the United States, we would support the Constitution of the State of Michigan. Counsel has stated that, you know, he smells something unconstitutional here, which I think i- is something that's very troubling. Um, and, you know, that we were going to discharge our duties to the best of our ability and part of our duties are the welfare and safety of our students and our staff. And that's our job. We were sworn into office to, to, to guard that and protect that. I don't care what they say in Lansing, they can just go get wet. And I, I think it's really sad that, you know, we were just able to prove tonight that the legislature is not smarter than a ninth grader. This is absolutely outrageous. I, I fully support, um, the, uh, motion that's on the table and I agree with my colleague completely. I think we take a forceful stand on this and let the chips fall where they may.
Other voices. Mr. Barron?
If memory serves, this is the second go-round for this kind of a, uh, resolution in the, uh, the House and the Senate.
It is.
A few years ago, they passed similar, uh, law or, or stat proposal and the governor vetoed it.
That's right.
it.
That's right.
We have the same governor. He has not always had the intestinal fortitude to stand up to his legislature. He did once here, and they're having another bite at the apple. So even if the House does pass this, which our resolution recommends that they do not, there is still a potential of a gubernatorial veto, whether it's this part of this year and also, or during the next few months. Also, you know, unfortunately, there's going to be a lame-duck session where you've got a third of the House and half of the Senate who will not be accountable to the voters at that point. So we'll have to see how things go. As you know, trustee banks, Ann Arbor and CLIO, did take those kind of positions, and they had lawsuits filed against them and people marching up and down there outside of their school and inside their school with rifles and handguns. So this has gone to court, and I'm not sure how the interconnection between the lawsuits and the proposals are right now, but this has been challenged in court right now.
So we have a proposed resolution. Do you wish to change that resolution?
I don't think we can adopt a policy tonight. I think this is a formal procedure, as much as I would like to make a motion to prohibit open carry in schools and prohibit concealed weapons in schools and take that stand tonight. I think that would violate our procedures for how we adopt a new policy. And so, as much as I'd love to make that motion, I'll bring it up at the next agenda meeting.
Right. So we have a resolution.
And I'll write something out formally, but...
We have a resolution. That's a short-term, obviously, measure. So that's what's before us at the moment, and I'm just wondering if you have other improvements, changes, whatever you think would be better than what we've got in front of us.
The only thing I would request is maybe the secretary, because not everyone necessarily has actually read this in the district, people who are watching on TV. Is it possible for someone to read the resolution?
Very definitely. Yes, please.
Resolution of the Bloomfield Hills School Board, opposition to Senate Bills 584 through 586, whereas one of the primary functions of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education provide a safe environment conducive to student growth and learning in the Bloomfield Hills Schools, and whereas the Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education currently works closely with administration, staff, and our local law enforcement officials, including the Bloomfield Hills Police, Bloomfield Township Public Safety, and West Bloomfield Police Departments, to develop, implement, and continually update specialized plans to maintain safe learning environments for students and safe working environments for our staff and volunteers. And whereas Michigan Senate Bills 584 through 586 allow people who obtain enhanced concealed pistol licenses to carry concealed weapons into our local public schools and prohibits Michigan public school districts, and specifically the Bloomfield Hills School Boards of Education from banning guns on school grounds, and whereas Senate Bills 584 through 586 increase exponentially the number of potential threats to our students' safety and further aggravates our district's ability to identify and plan for these threats, and whereas the potential of these threats and all the materialization of these threats both detract from the sense of safety in our schools and the actual safety in our schools, and will have a negative impact on student growth and learning. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education strongly oppose the passage of the Michigan Senate Bills 584 through 586 into law, and further oppose any future bills that require local public school districts to allow guns not carried by police officers into our public schools.
So actually, I do see a correction that needs to happen here, which is, it should be Bloomfield Hills Public Safety and Bloomfield Township Police.
And on the second line, the word "conductive," I believe, should be "conducive."
Any other suggestions, corrections, conversation? Mr. Politeer, let's call a question. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I thank you all. So go home and hug your families, and we'll all do our best to keep them safe and sound. Thank you for being here.